Attention, I'd like to call the September twelfth, two thousand and thirteen Board of Education meeting to order. We're glad to see everybody here. I see some old familiar faces I haven't seen in a while, and I'd like to welcome everybody. And we'll start off with Kristen Marcy. She's gonna do an invocation, and then we'll have the pledge. If everybody will please stand.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for another wonderful day here on planet Earth. New school year is well underway, and we are excited for our students as they embark on another year of learning in this great county. Once again, we join together tonight to do your work and serve the community as best we are able. Help us and guide us to make the best choices and decisions that benefit our students the most. Father, we ask that you look after those that are sick and not well, and help to cure them. Also protect those brave citizens who look after us each and every day, both here and abroad. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first, we have agenda approval. You have before you an agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second, a motion by Tom, and a second by Nancy. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Okay, and then we move on to our presentation and discussion items. And the first one is policy JGFGB, which is concussion management with Mr. Todd Shirley.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. How are you?
I am good. Sandy, how do I get to the...
JGFGB.
I gotta tell you, I really feel, and if you can, if I can humor you just for a minute, I'm under a lot of pressure here because when I first came to Forsyth County, Tracy interviewed me, and Mr. Gill hired me. So I really, it's almost kind of a deja vu situation. And then I slid into, well, I slid into Bruce's spot recently, too. And Dr. Salome interviewed me, and she offered me a position. I told her no, because I was gonna go with Mr. Gill. So it was kinda funny. We were interviewing in a room, and Laura Link asked me a question about how many periodicals I've been reading on education. And I looked at her, and I said, ma'am, do you have any concept of what a high school athletic director does? I had been working seven nights a week, and Tracy jumped up from the other end of the table and drug me out of the room before I could stick my foot the rest of the way. He then took me to Mr. Gill and said, hire him. So I guess I feel, I guess I'm honored to be here. Dr. Salome's never let me forget, I told her no either. So we are, we are under directive to have a policy in place by January of 2014 for concussion management. This is no surprise to us, and we have been all along managing our concussions in our high school students at our local school level appropriately. This is just going to be a requirement that we're gonna put in place under our board policy, JGFGB. I wanna just run through these real quick with you. This policy mirrors a sample by the state, so we are taking something that is a recommendation and actually making it our policy. We didn't reinvent the wheel on this one. All of our athletic directors had an opportunity to review this, and to take a look at it, and to give feedback to it, and they've all agreed that this is a good policy and what we need to adopt. Number one, prior to the beginning of each season, basically, number one is stating that we will give notification to the parents. And if you will look at the second page of the presentation, this is the awareness form that we are currently using. It is posted on our athletics website, under the participation forms and the physical forms that are required. This is a mirror of Georgia High School Association, so we are right in line with what they are doing. That satisfies component one. Component two is basically stating that a student that is determined to have a concussion during a game shall not be placed back in the game, shall be seen by a healthcare provider. Three, designated personnel shall not permit the student to return to play until he or she receives care from a provider. We have been doing that all along. We use the Georgia High School Association clearance form. That is part of the physical packet. We do require our students that are injured to have full medical clearance. Four defines what a healthcare provider is, and we feel that that is a necessary component in this, because we do want those students checked out by an accepted healthcare provider. Five, coaches and employees, individuals supervising extracurricular activities are expected to use their training and professional judgment. Six will remove liability from us. And then seven authorizes superintendent to develop, for the development of administrative regulations and our guidelines needed to implement this policy. Basically, when we put this into policy, we are saying that this is the bedrock of what we will do with concussion management. Page, the third page I just included for your information, these are our current high schools right now, the trainers that are working with our high schools, and the testing that they are currently using. We are under IMPACT testing at all of our high schools. We currently have some pricing in place, well, we already have pricing in place this year, and IMPACT testing done this year, but the Department of School Safety is looking at the possibility of taking over, paying for IMPACT testing for all of our athletes in the county for next season. We're just investigating it right now as a part of our safety component for all of our student athletes. It is not an expensive program. It is a proven program, and the information that the parents get is in, is in the last, last slide that you have. This is a sample letter from IMPACT. It explains what the program is. All of this designed to protect a student that has received a concussion in any athletic event. I am here to ask that you please adopt JGFGB as our concussion management policy.
Okay. I believe we leave it on the table till our next meeting for any discussion. I think we definitely need this. I know that this has really become a big deal, even in the NFL and everything. I think it's very important. What is the impact? I mean, would you do that for everybody that was an athlete?
Essentially, in a nutshell, they...
I mean, do you do it once or her, or do you do it at the beginning?
It's pre and post.
Oh, okay.
They take, take a test. They'll go into a room on a computer. They will take a test. I think the ideal scenario for it is in the morning time, after they've had a good breakfast, a good night of sleep. They put them in a quiet place, let them take the test on the computer, and then if they receive a blow of some type, then there is a post-test that is done by the organization that initiated the IMPACT testing, and that will help them determine where and when they're ready to return to play.
So it'll be kinda like the physicals that you require, kinda require everybody to do this, and...
Pretty similar. It's not mandated.
Okay, so it's not required.
It is not, no. It is not a requirement. It's just a recommendation that we make. Parents can go to a number of places and receive the IMPACT testing. They can also do other things. They don't have to do that at all. We are still going to clear these athletes through a healthcare provider, whether they go through any type of baseline testing before or after, either way.
If we did do that, the parents opted to do it, what will we do with that data? Would it be stored locally? Would it go on?
It's, it's stored, it is stored with IMPACT. I think it is also stored with the trainer, the provider that would provide the post-test information. Right in front of you, Atlanta Rehab, ATC, they would all have the ability to capture that and to give feedback on whether, you know, what the degree of the concussion would be.
Okay. Alrighty. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay. And next, we have Dr. Salome with Mountain Education Charter High School.
Good afternoon.
Actually, you're not with them. You're with us. Presentation, right?
I am. I am with you. At least I was thirty minutes ago. It is my pleasure. I get this afternoon to tell you about Mount Ned and our exciting agreement with them, and I get to introduce you, those of you who don't know, and those, reintroduce those of you who do know. I've got Tracy Sandberg. He is the regional director for MECC. Larry Shook, who is the assistant superintendent for MECC. I've got George Counter, who is public relations with MECC. And two gentlemen who don't really need introductions, Richard Gill, who would be a site administrator, and Bruce Wagar, who will be a site administrator. So we're excited to have them back in our fold shortly, beginning January fourteenth, actually. I wanted to tell you that we have been talking with MECC now for approximately a year. Last fall, all high school principals and myself and several others in the district office met with Tracy Sandberg and some others. And even before that, we knew about MECC, because we have students who actually go there. Their closest facility to us is Delanica, and so at times, we had students who didn't fit our regular program, and they would choose to go to MECC and then ultimately graduate, which was what we all wanted them to do. So we had a relationship ongoing now for some years with them, but a distant relationship. So last fall, we started talking about our academy at night and the programs that we provide there. And we made, a couple of people made site visits to MECC to see exactly what they have. They have a few more social services and some things like that than we can provide. And so while we've been providing a good academic program at night, sometimes those students need that handheld. They need a few other things to make certain that they do, in fact, stay in school and get that diploma. And MECC has designed, is designed to do that. So we have formed a contract with them for evening education opportunities. We did not want to eliminate any activities that we already had for students. And so last fall, we talked about it. It became, the barrier to MECC became the distance from here to there. So we did not disband our academy at night so that we could offer students a close opportunity for evening programs, but we also knew that they had other things that we couldn't do. So they came back to us this past spring and said, we are able and would like to consider opening a facility on your, in your county. Because we told them then, the only problem was the fact that we, it was the distance. And if they could come here, we'd love to talk to them. So when they realized that they had the opportunity to come here, or the ability to come here, they came back to us. So it will be onsite. It'll be right here behind us at Forsyth Academy at Night. So instead of being an academy-at-night student, they'll be a MECC student. They will have, the students will see increased social services. As they'll tell you in a few minutes, they have a proven record of success. They're going to try to utilize their, the staff that's known, and of course, as you see, they're hiring other people that we know. And we plan to begin in January. The impact for the students are going to be, if they want to go full-time, they will enroll with MECC. They will be their students. It is a charter school, and he'll tell you, Tracy will tell you all about that in a minute. They will see some increased social services and some contact and some mentoring that we have not been able to provide. There are going to be expanded course offerings in some areas that we have not been able to provide that they do. One of the things that children will probably, the students will probably like is the flexible attendance. Their attendance requirement is very different from ours. Their tardy policy is nonexistent, so those students can come learn and take the courses when they want to, at the time they want to, Monday through Thursday. The enrollment is rolling, which means there are no deadlines or entry dates. So if a student is not doing well, say, in a regular high school, in early November, we can still go to MECC and do that, whereas we had had some deadlines about enrollment in the, previously. And then there's the career counseling that they'll get, so these students hopefully can see what the future can hold for them with a high school diploma. So I will turn it over to Tracy to tell you some background about MECC.
Thank you, Dr. Salome. Thank you, board, for entertaining our presentation today. And Dr. Evans, and we're looking forward to this partnership with you all. What is MECC? MECC is a public high school. It's a charter high school. We are SACS accredited. We are going through a SACS accreditation this year. So we're the exact same standards and procedures, basically, that your high schools go through. The only thing is, we're an evening program, and we're gonna, we're gonna talk a little bit about some of the, some of the differences. The history of MECC. Our first site was in Union County in nineteen ninety-three, and at that time, as I was talking with Dr. Norton in the lobby coming in, we were under the, the Union County school system when we started out. And as, the reason that MECC was formed was because the graduation rate in the North Georgia high schools was less than sixty percent completion at the time. So the school systems knew they had to do something to get these kids to finish. And so MECC was developed. It has grown immensely from nineteen ninety-three, and the first year, there was three graduates. And now, in January of twenty fourteen, we will have eleven sites. We will be serving over thirty counties. We're serving two states, because we do have some students that have come in from North Carolina to some of our sites. We were established as a charter school in two thousand and seven, and now the average high school graduation rate is over eighty percent, and that's throughout North Georgia. And I realize that you all have a higher graduation rate than that, and that's great and wonderful, but we feel like we can come in and help you get it even higher. That's our main purpose, is partnering with you all, plus pulling these students that have fell through the cracks. You've got some students that, for whatever reason, they have had to fall out of high school, could have been a pregnancy, could have had to, went to work, et cetera. We're that second chance, second opportunity for them, and we're hoping that we can go out and actively recruit those kids and get them back in school for you. And that helps your scores and your CCRPI by them not being a dropout. Over two hundred graduates in twenty twelve. We had two hundred and sixty-two graduates last year, and four of the graduates were from Forsyth County. I currently have nine students from Forsyth County right now at the Lumpkin site. So, you know, you've had some students that's been utilizing it. At one time, we had ninety-five students from Forsyth County. Programs, we're, we're basically three programs. The first one is dropout recovery. Dropout recovery is obviously students who have dropped out of their base high school, and they wish to, to get back into a school and get a diploma. Those are the kids I was mentioning, that they've dropped out for whatever reason they've dropped out. We'll go out and actively recruit them, try to get them back in school. Then we have dropout prevention. Dropout prevention is maybe the students that have failed a course, still are your high school students, and they can stay enrolled in your high schools and come to us for credit recovery. That would be an extra op, I know you do credit recovery during the day, but this would be another opportunity for them, in case they've gotten way behind, and they just can't do it all in one day, then they've got that.
So they would go to our high school during the day, and then they could come there at night?
Absolutely. And then initial credit. You always have some students that, you know, move in, high transit, et cetera. They may be behind. They may need to pick up an additional course, et cetera, to get back on track. So we will offer initial credit. And like I said, those are kids that haven't dropped out, or they just may not fit into the traditional high school. They may wanna get away from the large high school, et cetera. Then we would be there for them, too. We have a very unique schedule. We're open year-round. We're a Monday-through-Thursday program. We will be four-thirty to nine-thirty, so five hours a day. We have rolling enrollment, like Dr. Salome had said earlier, so a child can come and enroll with us at any given day. We do not have a set time, and we have flexible attendance. And I'm sure you've got questions about what is flexible attendance. The way that our charter is written, is we give the students an opportunity. Keep in mind, a student that's sixteen years or older does not fall under the compulsory attendance laws. Those students can come and go basically as they please. We require that a child stay a minimum of an hour, once they clock in with us, and clock in in the classroom. But after they've been there an hour, they can clock out and leave, or sign out. I say clock out. We have a thumb-in, thumb-out system, so we're very technologically sound, as Forsyth County is, and I think you'll be impressed with the technology that we'll use. But a child can come at four-thirty when we open the doors, or they can come at six-thirty, or they can come at eight-thirty. That's up to them. So if they've got something going on during the day, and they can't get there till six-thirty, that's great. They come in. They don't have to explain to us why they're only getting there at six-thirty. The next day, they may get there at four-thirty. And we do have some kids that come at four-thirty and stay the entire time. We have some that'll come stay a couple hours a night. So that's flexible attendance to us. And most everything in our program is flexible.
What about with the driver's services?
What we do is, we consider twenty hours as a full-time student, and so they have to be in school the full twenty hours a week for the full month before we will give them the ADAPT card to go get their driver's license. Our academics are top-notch. We use a computer-based program called NovaNet. You all had NovaNet at your alternative school many years ago, and I think you went to the Apex program now. Well, they have completely revamped NovaNet, and it's a good program. Our EOCT scores are as good as anyone across the North Georgia region, so we know that the curriculum is, is positive and is headed in the right way. Everything is self-paced. It's on the computer. So that's where the flexible attendance can come in. They can come in, and they can start working wherever. When they leave, you know, they're leaving off there. They'll pick up at the exact same spot the next time they come back. So even if they don't come the next day, or the next day, whenever they come back, they pick up and go on. We'll have certified teachers in every classroom, English Mass, Science, Social Studies, and a special ed teacher every night. That'll be an offering every night. We'll also have graduation coaches there. We'll have a counselor there. We'll have a social worker. And every child will be assigned a mentor. We pay mentors to work with these kids, because a lot of these kids, why are they here? Something is up in their life, so they need that extra pull. And those mentors will be in touch with the parents or that child every week, encouraging them to come back to school or to stay in school, giving them an extra pat on the back. We're a low class size. Our classes are fourteen to one. Like I said, everybody is certified, so we've had real good, real good success there. Extra services, we do do career planning, because like I said, we have counselors there every night. We do home visits. We let either parapro, social workers, or someone, and sometimes that rotates through. They'll go out and do home visits, especially if they're not showing up. Individual counseling is available. We do some substance abuse programs and new moms programs. We've already been in contact with the family connections in Forsyth County, and hopefully we can get some groups started here, especially for new moms, teenage moms, where they can come in and get some good advice, and they'll have a group of peers that they can all talk to. We feel like this is a win-win. We've talked to Dr. Evans and Dr. Salome from the get-go, that we feel like this is a, like I said, a win-win of, for Forsyth County and Mountain Education Charter High School to partner. You know, I personally have bragged on Forsyth County from being a former employee of you all. I think Forsyth County is a great school system. I enjoyed my time here, and as you can see, we've got two of your proven principals that's been in the county that are eager to be back with us. And so in a lot of ways, the kids are never gonna miss a beat. It's been refreshing to see, we've actually had one of Richard's former students from West that was at Lump, at the Lumpkin site, and the first night that he was there, you know, they were both like, wow. So, you know, those are some things that, you know, you can't, you can't imagine the kind of expectations we have of Bruce and Richard with their experience coming onboard with us. So I'd be glad to answer any questions that I can.
Dr. Salome mentioned you have some courses that we don't currently offer. Can you give an example of one of those, if I tap your hat, or I might put you on the spot?
What exactly were you referring to?
I think I remember a foreign language. We have a little bit of Spanish on occasion, and you all have it regularly.
Correct. What we'll do is, we will try to, and this will be, like I said, a partnership with you all. So we will try to expand our offerings as much as we possibly can with the staff that we can pull from Forsyth County to work in the afternoons, and the facilities, especially with CTAE programs. If we can get some people involved that's at a base school, that's interested in maybe doing an automotives, or a wood shop, a cosmetology, and we've got the interest, we can, we can look at those. But we'll definitely have a foreign language class offered, and we'll be creative with our schedule, where that it'll probably be one or two nights a week. But we'll definitely offer a Spanish program, and we've already been talking with a couple of people to teach the Spanish course and to have some interpreters there. So we're hoping that we can help you with your Hispanic population, too.
And so we will just not have the, the night academy after in January?
That's correct. It will transition. As a matter of fact, Brad Smith has already assembled a letter, and so after your information tonight and knowing what was going on, we'll let, we'll start letting parents and students know. But again, they're not gonna see a great deal of difference in what they normally do, other than some things they'll like.
How many, how many kids do we have in the night academy now?
Seventy-eight is day, so about, I think about forty-eight was what I last looked at. It might be more now. That was a couple of weeks ago.
Okay. And what about the financial impact?
I was gonna say the cost.
You wanna tell them how you do FTE?
Well, I'll be glad to. Or I'll maybe let Mr. Shook talk. First of all, let me, I wanna back up just a second. I forgot to say that the first thing we're looking to do is, we're gonna try to hire every teacher that you have currently in place for the night academy. We're, hopefully, that'll be a smooth transition into us. Obviously, they will become our employees, so they'll have to go through the application process, same screening that you all do, et cetera. And then we're hoping to put them in place. I forgot to say that, but, so that'll be a smooth transition. And like Dr. Salome said, that will be a smooth transition for the kids, because they'll be seeing the same teachers, for the most part. Funding. We are funded through FTE, just like Forsyth County. We are a little bit different, because we are a second chance, alternative funding. So I guess you could say our funding may be just a little bit higher funding. That's how we're able to offer some of the student services that you do not have in place now, because of the extra funding. But if they become, if they withdraw from you and enroll with us, then we would receive the FTE money for those kids. If they stay enrolled with you and then come to us for credit recovery, or just some initial credit, then they would pay a minimum cost of a hundred and fifty dollars per class to take the course.
And as far as our, they, Dr. Behrens and Dr. Evans have been talking, and the startup, they have some startup funds to get us going for technology, increasing computers, that kinda thing, because right now, we have fifteen computers in a room. They desire to have at least twenty in a room. They're projecting about two hundred students as we go, and kinda hope we don't get past two hundred students, because then we gotta figure out what to do next. But they also provide the system money for reinforcement for utilities, that kinda thing. So it's pretty cost-neutral for us, and maybe even will gain a little bit.
And I guess enrollment truly changes a lot, because you have, they, they come and go, as they won't need to get credit or recovery and stuff, so it's very fluctuating.
My thoughts on this is, you know, we'll take all of the kids, hopefully, that are enrolled in the night academy now, in December, and we'll enroll them right into Mountain Education for the January startup. I'm predicting that probably around March or around spring break, when you have some of the students realize that they're not gonna finish at one of their base schools.
Enrollment will go.
I think our enrollment will pick up. But I think after a couple of months of word-of-mouth, especially with the flexible attendance, et cetera, I think we'll be able to pull some of the students...
Some of those that just quit, maybe they'll...
That have quit, correct. And that's our goal. Our goal is to get those kids back in, which will help you all.
But it sounds like you're gonna start about fifty, sixty percent capacity?
Probably less than that. We're thinking the capacity of the building is about a hundred and fifty to two hundred, the way we're set up, because our kids won't be there every night. With the flexible attendance, you know, some kids will be there two nights a week, some will be there three, but very few usually come four nights a week. The only ones that come four nights a week will be from the March time on, where they're really buckling down, trying to get ready to graduate. And they'll be there.
He does serve fifteen-year-olds. You heard you mention the sixteen and above. He does serve fifteen-year-olds, but it, and that adds transportation, as in the parents that have to get them there and that kinda thing. But, and we haven't served that many fifteen-year-olds in our night school at this point, but they will do that.
And one last thing. We will be serving a dinner meal. We do serve our free and reduced population, so we're working with your food and nutrition to provide a dinner meal. So those kids that are free and reduced would be able to eat free and reduced onsite. The other ones are welcome to buy a meal, or they can bring their own food.
Could you explain a little bit about, since it's a state charter school, I just don't understand very much. Like, you're, so you're not county-based, since you've got over thirty counties and two states. So if you hire the people that, you know, because they obviously then have to say, I don't wanna work for Forsyth County anymore. I wanna work for you. So how does that work as far as, how's it set up?
First of all, you're probably not gonna have anybody that's gonna say they wanna not work for Forsyth County and wanna work for us, because we only hire part-time people.
Okay.
Now, we're gonna try to utilize as many of your staff as we possibly can, but they'll be hourly employees. We'll pay them the same state hourly rate that they would get from the state. That's our pay scale.
Are a lot of our employees already part-time?
Yes.
At night, already, anyway?
Yes. Particularly our academy-at-night people are already teaching at night. Those same people would very likely be some of the same people who would go to work with Mountain Education.
Right. And I didn't know for sure, if we had any full-time employees already... Right, and I didn't know for sure if we had any full-time employees already that may be looking, obviously wanting to stay.
He's gonna have full-time employees with his program that we have not had, because he's got full-time positions. Right now, we have all part-time positions.
Okay, okay.
We'll have a full-time registrar that will be there, really, they'll be there ten hours a day, because it's four days a week. So they'll come in roughly around lunchtime and stay all the way till nine-thirty. And then the rest will float in. We like to utilize as many retired teachers as we possibly can.
Right.
A lot of people like to work, you know, ten or twelve hours a week, and they don't wanna work much more than that. And so we try to utilize that. And the good thing of that is, they're fresh when they come in in the afternoon.
Is that how it's gonna work with Richard and, I'm looking straight at Adam, Bruce? They're gonna split the job, essentially?
Correct, correct. I'll be here some, and Richard and Bruce will be here the days that I'm not here.
I agree.
Still, like, half intrigued and half struggling with the flexibility thing. Does that actually draw students in because they like that and they actually stay, or they don't abuse the freedom? I mean, it just...
You know, I'm not gonna say that there's not some that abuse it, but we have good, good success with the flexible scheduling, flexible attendance. Anything that comes up in a child's life, and a lot of our students currently, like I've mentioned before, maybe are, you know, teenage parents, and they're staying at home during the day, and then their parents get home in the afternoon, and they have time to go to school, et cetera. So that flexible attendance and scheduling is good, and so maybe the child is sick tonight, so they don't have to worry about calling and saying, I can't come. They just know that they're not coming, and we're okay with that. That's okay, that's the way our charter is written.
So is there a procedure or policy that at some point, if Jane hasn't shown up in X number of days, someone's on the phone, or?
Correct. Remember, I mentioned each child will have a mentor. We pay a mentor for every child. That mentor is required to contact that child or that parent every week to talk about anything that's going on in their life and their academic success. So if there's an issue, maybe attendance, whatever it is, they'll talk about it, they'll encourage them to be back at school, et cetera.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
The only correction that I would make to the presentation is actually, I think it's win, win, win. First of all, it's an opportunity for our students that they don't currently have, because it's a type of programming that goes above and beyond what we currently do. For the school system, it's a win, because this is, Dr. Sloan used the term "cost neutral." I think that's probably a good descriptor of it. The reality of it is, it's adding an opportunity without increasing our costs, which will actually create higher high school completion rates for us as a district. And the third thing for Mountain Ed, I mean, we think it's win for them, because they will be expanding into an area that they have been marginally serving, but this will give them a footprint and a presence there. So I realistically think it's win, win, win. And in the end, two years down the road, three years down the road, we'll look back and we'll say, you know, we went from an eighty-seven percent cohort graduation rate to a ninety-five percent cohort rate. What were the decisions that did this? And this, I believe, honestly, will be one of them. And it came at no local cost to the school system.
That's wonderful, sounds really good.
Yeah, I agree, I think we've had demand for this type of program for a long time. We've had a standing-room-only type line waiting, you know, for capacity. And I think this'll give it to us and allow us to continue to serve those. We always hear, I know when we started our academy charter many years ago, we used to hear a lot of really neat success stories at graduation. And I expect that same thing to come out of here, where people kinda get their life back and start moving forward and really do graduates, more than just that graduation number, even though it's important to us, and getting to a hundred percent is our desire. But we have to move it, we're from where we're at, over ninety, to a hundred, and that's the hard place. And I think this is a piece of it, like Dr. Evans said.
It sounds great, we look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have the 2014-15 District Lines Draft One with Mr. Joey Perkel.
Good afternoon.
Hot off the press.
Hot off the press, right. Okay, what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna go through and just quickly run through and tell you what we did to create the first draft for District Lines. And also, as you're well aware of, that we talked about, when we talked about the timeline and the communication plan, all of this information, and Jennifer's gonna talk to us just really, just briefly at the end about the next steps as far as that's concerned. But it all will be live on the website, information out in schools. So we'll, we have all that ready to go, so that folks can start to sit down, look at it. I mean, because, you know, there's a lot of stuff here. So I'm gonna just give you the gist of it, and then you'll have time as a board also to look at it. There'll be opportunities for feedback as we move then through the process. So I'll start with Midway. You can see, if you'll notice, at the end of each school, in parentheses, for example, Midway Elementary Relief, six hundred and thirty-seven, that is the capacity of the school. Shallow's capacity is eleven sixty-two, and so on. We tried to put information together. Tim put all this information, compiled it for us in a document, hopefully, that will be easy to understand and succinct, and summarize everything that we did for this first draft. Midway, we moved sixty-five students, and you can see to the right, the areas we moved those students from, Union Hill to Shallow Road, which included Shepherd's Pond and Wallace Run. So this is, again, is just a brief description of the area that we moved these students from. And there's a map also, those will be posted, and you have access already on your desktop to those that you can see. They're highlighted, so that you can easily see. For example, if you see a school area, the highlighted sections in that school area on that map are the areas that came to that school. Okay? And at the top there, where it says Midway, PGM to SFFH, that is the feeder pattern. So these sixty-five students moved from that area to Shallow Point. You can see they kept the same feeder pattern. We also moved forty-nine students from Midway, which is the Hanover Place subdivision. They joined the Hanover Point area that we moved in the previous redistricting from Midway. And you can see that they also will keep the same feeder pattern, Middle School, Piney Grove to South Forsyth High School. And then if you look to the right, under Midway, the number six seventy-three that's underlined, that, okay, so that's the number that Midway then, after these two moves, that's the number of students that Midway's left with. And again, these are live numbers, body students, okay?
So this is a big improvement from Midway. Not only that, but if I remember correctly, we were in around the nine hundred and ten, thereabouts, earlier this year. So we're going from nine hundred and ten roughly to six hundred and seventy-three for Midway.
Right, yes.
Much needed improvement.
And as I, I don't know if I said this or not, but as you're well aware, having been involved in redistricting in the past, it's a domino effect. Okay, so if you'll see, we moved down to Shallow Point. There, you can see their capacity is eleven sixty-two. We moved a hundred and eighty-seven students from the Shallow Road at Stony Point, which included Shallow Farms Ridge at Stony Point, Stoneview. We moved a hundred and eighty-seven students from that general area to Big Creek. Their feeder pattern was Piney Grove Middle to South High, their feeder pattern stays Piney Grove Middle, South High. And that leaves Shallow Point then at one thousand ninety-two. Okay, then, we have to, then, we then had to come to Big Creek, and we had to move some students from Big Creek, and we moved two hundred and twenty-five students from Big Creek. And you can see the areas there that we took those students from, and moved those to Brookwood.
Is it two twenty-five or two fifty-five?
I'm sorry, two fifty-five, if I said two twenty-five, I meant two fifty-five. That leaves Big Creek at eight thirty, and Brookwood at nine eighty-three. And you can see that Big Creek's capacity is eight eighty-seven. Brookwood's, Brookwood's capacity is eleven thirty-seven. All right, and then, so then we moved down to Dave's Creek, who has, which has a capacity of ten sixty-two. We moved a hundred and sixty-seven students from Old Atlanta Road and Sharon Road, that area, to Sharon Elementary School. They have a feeder pattern of South Forsyth Middle to South Forsyth High School. We moved those to Sharon. That, they keep the feeder pattern of South Forsyth Middle School to South Forsyth High School. I do, I wanna, I wanna back up and point something out that's not on here, that I meant to, then I forgot. If you go back up one to Big Creek, where we moved two hundred and fifty-five students from Big Creek to Brookwood, that did add a new feeder pattern, an additional feeder pattern for Brookwood. So you see, they go to, it added a feeder, where they're now, where Brookwood is South Forsyth Middle and Lambert, it added a feeder pattern of Piney Grove Middle and South Forsyth High School. But it's a two hundred and fifty-five students.
That's a pretty large percentage.
So normally, we don't wanna create another split, but in this case, being that they'll be able to keep the remainder of their feeder pattern the way it was, it's a good thing.
Right. And the only other change in the feeder pattern was Dave's Creek, where we moved the one hundred and sixty-seven students from Dave's Creek to Sharon Elementary School. That added for Sharon, that added a group of students, because Sharon is now one hundred percent South Middle, Lambert. So that put them, I mean, yeah, so that put them, those students at South Middle and South High. Now, that does not change their high school. It just adds a different, an additional feeder pattern to Sharon.
So only changes them at the elementary level?
That's right. That's correct. Okay, sorry, I meant to say that, and I forgot that. Then if we move down then to Dave's Creek, one hundred and seventy-eight, you can see we moved a hundred and seventy-eight students from Trammell Road, Dave's Creek Road, north of Dave's Creek Drive, to Hall Creek. That's a Lakeside South High feeder pattern, and it stays a Lakeside South High.
What is Hall Creek's capacity?
Hall Creek's capacity is eight, I'm sorry, eleven eighty-seven.
Okay, the eight fourteen is how many's enrolled now? On there?
Right, yeah.
Okay, okay. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay. Settles Bridge, okay, so then we come to Settles Bridge. We moved forty-five students from James Burgess Road, south of Nichols Drive, including Turnberry and Keystone subdivisions, moving those students to Sharon Elementary. The same feeder pattern, they keep the same feeder pattern. That leaves Settles Bridge, you can see that number's in bold, nine hundred and forty-six, where their capacity is ten thirty-seven.
So with this, the only school that's over at all is still, is just Midway, and it's just five percent?
I think that's correct, yes.
And with the building of a new school, we're looking to leave that down the road.
Yes, with what we're working on here, yes.
And what's the capacity of Sharon?
Sharon, eleven eighty-seven. Come on, then the second page, again Sharon. Going to Sharon Elementary School, we moved Old Atlanta, an area on Old Atlanta Road from Glen Creek South, which is fifty-nine students, moving those students to Johns Creek. They keep the same feeder pattern. Okay, so that's all of the elementary schools. All right, Middle School, Riverwatch, their capacity's ten thirty-seven. We moved two hundred and fifty-one students from Laurel Springs subdivision and Nichols Road area to South Forsyth Middle. They keep the same high school feeder pattern, that didn't change. That leaves Riverwatch with eleven sixty-eight. Then we have to go, yeah, we have to go and move south, sixty-nine students from South Middle to Lakeside, and we took those students from Brandon Hall subdivision with the Gilbert Road and the Dave's Creek Drive area. And that was sixty-nine students to Lakeside. So that leaves South Middle at eleven eighty-two, and Lakeside at eleven forty-seven. And Lakeside's capacity, which is not on here, is ten thirty-seven.
So it leaves everybody still a little overcrowded, but more equally overcrowded.
That's correct, for the middle schools, especially Riverwatch.
Right, because it was so high.
Yeah, Riverwatch is...
We had to move, because South had more room than Riverwatch, obviously. We didn't have to move as many kids. And when I say more room, I mean more room to get them as equally overcapacity, you know what I'm saying?
How many trailers are currently at Riverwatch, roughly, Mr. Emerson? Ten, okay. Okay, you're correct, yes, all right, pods are, okay, that's a lot.
So, and again, you have the maps, and the maps, you know, I've told you kinda how we did those. Hopefully, they'll be easy for you to take what's listed here, and then you can go to that map and you can look at it. Those will be the maps that we will post, and Jennifer's gonna talk to you about what the next steps are.
At six o'clock tonight, this will all be live under the news section of our website. But if you go to our website right now and do backslash redistricting, it's already there.
Backslash or forward slash?
Forward slash, sorry. Okay. So what we just went over is already there. We clarified again that it is not our intent to change the high school lines. We know that we've gotten many phone calls about that, so I just wanted to say that on camera and at the public meeting, that there's no change in the high school lines. And then two, we also noted in there about the grandfathering of the fifth and the eighth grade students, because we know that's a big question that we'll get. And that will open up to people to apply for an out-of-district in December after you approve the lines in November. So you'll be able to scroll down this website, and the summary that Mr. Perkel just went over is posted there, as well as both copies of the maps. And then the online survey there is also posted there, too. And we just want to remind people that whenever you email or call a board member or a staff member, we will not be including that feedback into this online form. So we're encouraging everyone to use this online form, because as you know, as board members, we take that information and send it to you, and you read every single piece of information that's on the form.
And you organize it and categorize it, so the more they do it online, we get it more, it has more impact.
It's more comprehensive.
Right, so if we email, the biggest thing we need to tell them is to make sure you get it online, so everyone sees it.
That helps.
And then below, we also have the timeline, just to remind everyone, so they know what the process is, that we will be bringing it back to you and making some revisions. Then they will have another opportunity to do online feedback, and then they will all, we will also have a public forum for both the elementary school and the secondary schools. And then this will be approved before Thanksgiving. So this is online, right now, it will be on the news under, on the homepage at six o'clock. All of the schools will have it online tomorrow morning. We will send out an electronic newsletter to all parent portal subscribers tomorrow. We will also do a campus messenger email to everyone, we'll do social media blast. Trying to think, I have the maps that I will be delivering to the schools tomorrow, God bless you. And so they can actually physically go to the schools by tomorrow at noon, I should have all this delivered, that they'll be able to actually see the maps.
Every school is affected.
Every school that's affected, thank you. And the registration center and our office, too, they'll be able to view the maps.
Okay.
Okay, is there something we could just do for the schools that are not? Because I guess they already know which schools are and are not, correct?
Yeah, it's on here, and they, the schools that will not be impacted from this will still have it on their school website, because there are a lot of questions that you've been getting, just like I have, that it may not be an impacted school, but they still want to know about the redistricting.
Yeah, there's that unknown, we went through this last time, people really, the principals were like, are we sure? Are you really sure? And, okay.
And we've also met twice with the principals for these impacted schools to review the lines with them.
Okay.
Okay, do you have any questions about the communication?
And I think the big thing here is, it is draft one. And it is a process we go through, it's a very iterative process. We take feedback, we look at it, we think about it, we talk to the staff, how the recommendations came about. So it's the beginning's point, it's didn't seem that yet.
Actually, that's one of the questions I've gotten the most, is how has this come about? And I've explained to people that have asked me that it's very data-driven. Could yourself or Mr. Emerson just maybe comment a little bit on how these numbers, where the shifts came from, why they arrived at these numbers, I mean, not in great detail, but just a little bit briefly? Put you on the spot there.
So your question is?
Just a little bit.
We can't hear you from up there, can, Mr. Perkel, do you wanna come up and address that?
Right, I was gonna say, yeah.
I'm going to pull up the monthly attendance report, I posted this today. So this is the first month attendance.
Well, for example, we knew based on last year's LSC reports, for example, Dave's Creek, I think Riverwatch, some schools were reaching out saying, please, we're overcapacity, please do something to help our overcapacity issue. So we knew there were schools that went into this wanting to be redistricted, if you can say that. But can you explain a little bit about how the process became, how you picked, how many numbers needed to go from? I mean, obviously, it was a domino effect, but starting with, for example, Midway, needed to get rid of, not to move so many children. But can you explain a little bit about how you come up with the different pockets and the different areas that were best to move? A little bit of the numbers, or it is data-driven, is I guess we're trying to explain.
Well, it is data-driven, and we certainly did, I mean, and when we're in, and when we're, they're looking at it and we're moving, we're actually, I mean, we're looking at numbers.
And you actually have the notes? And you actually have the numbers of X amount of kids live in this subdivision, X amount, so you know if we move these, this will fit into the pattern of how many kids we need to move out.
Right. Exactly, right.
By grade level.
So, so, so for exam, and I'll, and I'll just give you one example, for example, so if we're looking at Big Creek, and, and again, I don't have, I didn't, I don't have all this, I'm kind of gonna make up numbers. So if we're looking at Big Creek, and Big Creek has eight hundred students, but they have a capacity for eleven hundred. Okay, well, we know that Big Creek can handle, um, three hundred more kids, three hundred more students. And then we've got, um, an adjacent, um, say Brookwood, who has, um, their overcapacity, ten, fifteen percent overcapacity. So we know that we can then move, uh, if we can, we can, we, is there an area that we can look to move a hundred, two hundred kids from Brookwood to Big Creek? Because they're over ten, twenty percent and they're under, way under capacity, okay, so-
Without changing the high school.
Okay, well, right, without try, without changing the high school feeder pattern and all of that. So when we look, and there are some areas that we look, I mean, obviously if, if Brookwood's here, and, I mean, if Big, Big Creek's here and Brookwood's here, we're not, we can't geographically look to move them from over here. Because we don't want them to go around Big Creek.
To get to it.
I think it was called Lursing, they used to do that a long time ago.
And then, um, so what we do then is then, so, and then there even may be an area here that we want to move to here, that it's, it's, it may be a huge area, and to move that, that entire, um, group, that may be five hundred kids. So we're like, well, that's gonna push this school way over, so those kinds of things we, we talk about and look at when we-
So it's an easy process.
So this is not some, how, roughly, I mean, you've been working on this for a while, correct? This is not a one big project, you've been doing this for months, or at least?
Yeah, it's been for, it's been ongoing for a while, yes.
It's very complicated, okay.
Yeah, it's been, there's been a lot of work.
I'll really sum up what Joey said.
And a whole lot more work on their part that actually sit behind the computer and look at the numbers and all of that.
Joey basically said a lot to say, there's, there's three, three words that describe it, data, logistics, and proximity. And within the concept too, ensuring that we try to create as much of a, a community-oriented schools as we possibly can, within the context of that data is driving that, uh, as well as the proximity and logistics from transportation, well, fitting within the feeder patterns that we're trying to honor as well.
I know we understand the domino effect, but I know that's one of the hardest things, it's like, I don't want to leave Big Creek, because you're taking me out, but then you're adding other kids back in, why are you doing that to me? And that's where I think parents get so upset, and they have to understand, because it is this whole domino effect.
And the logistics, that's the logistics part of it.
Just logistics, right, it had, this is the way it has to work, if our goal is to kind of even out, the population is essentially what we're doing.
And I mean, I'm impressed that you could do it without changing feeder patterns for high schools.
For high school, right.
Well, that's, I think, one of the beliefs we have, that we start with, we always want to keep those intact, because we know that's important, we've all had that experience. And I think too, one thing that had been mentioned is we do take into account the new schools we do have on the docket, so we are moving forward with that future plan. We can't do it right now, and that's why we're doing this to start with, because that plan was interrupted by the economy.
True.
And we now have to wait until we can do those schools and repopulate those schools, so we'll do that when that comes, but we're trying to think with that in mind as we do these changes as well.
True, well, and, and in the past, that plan has been different, obviously, due to the economy than it has the last several years, so it was very clear. And it was very clear and focused that we could, on purpose, have one area of the county to, to, we let them get over, because we, we knew this was gonna happen here. It's not been hardly as clear over the last two, three, four years, so we've had to do the best we can, and I think we, I think we've done okay with that.
And I think this allows us to continue to exhibit excellence with the funds we do have, without trying to go get more funds and raise taxes and do the things the community definitely doesn't want us to do.
Right.
So we're trying to fit it in with what we have, and I think Dr. Evans uses this a lot, start with where you're at.
Right.
And use what you've got, and so that's kind of what we're doing here. And then we'll move to the future and hope the economy turns around and everything gets back on track, and we have a real good building program as the, as we continue to grow, because we haven't stopped growing, that's one of the problems here.
So the timeline looks good for everybody, we will, we really haven't studied these, we will all take it and, and study it and collect the feedback and we will see you soon, I guess.
You will.
Okay, thank you very much.
We'll encourage more feedback, exactly.
Okay, and the next-
I think we were done.
Oh, she said, did you have some one more question?
No, I think I just wanted also, I just also want to clarify that we're doing this in conjunction with the facilities plan, so we're, we're not just, we're redistricting temporarily now to get things evened out, but we're doing this with, as Tom mentioned, to build on. But right now, we have schools that have ten outdoor facilities, or mod pods, or whatever you want to say, but we also have schools that have several empty classrooms. And we can't go to the state and say, look, we need money to build new schools, when they would turn and say, but you have a lot of empty classrooms. So this is something that we have to do to get to the next step, to make a bigger fix, long-term.
So with that being said, next we have the twenty-fourteen, twenty-nineteen local facilities plan discussion with Jennifer Garacholo, Bill McKnight, and Tim Amerson.
This is also online, if you go to our website and do forward slash facilities plan, you will see the overview or plan update, meet notes from our last committee meeting, and then we also put bond information on there too. And then we've created this week an additional site, if you go to our website and do forward slash twenty-fourteen bond, you'll also have all the bond information on there too, so we can, so we can start communicating those needs. So last time we presented to you in August, we gave you about, an update as to what our committee had been working on, our committee has not met since that time. We will meet again in October, the beginning of October, and that's whenever we will be discussing our CTAE needs at our high school and middle schools, and we'll also be talking about our technology needs for the next, um, three to four years. So what we're coming back to you tonight is that you've had a chance to digest what we presented to you, and we wanted to see what kind of feedback you wanted to give us that we can take to the committee to work on, so we can bring back to you in October. And really, the only thing we've done in the interim of that time period is that we do have a very rough sketch on some plans for North Forsyth High School. And so this is one of the items that we talked about in the last time for the facilities plan. We do, as we mentioned, we'll have other projects for the bond referendum, but we do not have that information yet to determine things such as more plans for schools, such as an example for South Forsyth High School.
So these plans only include what we will turn into the state for the facilities plan?
Some of it could, could be bond funded too, did I say that correctly?
Yes.
Okay, so other than North Forsyth High School, is there anything else, which Mr. Amerson will briefly re- review, is there anything else that as a board you would like us to take to the committee to discuss for the facilities plan?
Can you, Mr. Amerson, give me a little bit of background, we had, had some specific information on some of the high school needs and some of the middle school needs, can you lightly touch on some of the elementary needs, at least those three general topics that we didn't?
The three key areas that have kind of come up in our discussions with elementary schools, uh, the key one is the twenty-first century, uh, media center environment. A lot of schools have began incorporating that technology in those layouts, uh, becoming much more electronic and, and, uh, software-driven type, uh, environments, uh, much more collaborative workspace. The other area is more of, uh, what we call the collaborative workroom, these are where we're looking at creating large multipurpose rooms within the schools, as capacity allows us to absorb one classroom into another and create a project team room for pull-out groups to go in there and work together as a team, uh, so that's one thing we'll be looking at, uh, for those, uh, elementary school projects, is, as we look at bond projects, we'll look at those and consider those. And then the other area was what we call pull-out rooms, or small group areas, and that's where we'll modify a classroom, uh, we'll do things such as the folding wall partition, so as you pull reading groups out from one classroom to work on reading skills, maybe another classroom has another group that they'll pull out, that we can break those rooms into two or three sections, depending how we set up the movable wall partitions to collapse those rooms and give them a, a private space to go meet instead of sitting in the hallway or one of the other areas, the workers.
Sitting in the hallway, okay. Appreciate that one.
Those, those are three of the key areas that we've kind of gotten across the work from everyone.
Okay, all right, thank you.
What about CTAE space, I mean, as we start enhancing that, those programs and really focusing on those, sometimes their space needs are different?
Yes.
Are there some discussion about that and what that looks like in the future?
There is, uh, we've kind of talked in general, as we did our, uh, facility plan review, that's where we went and looked at the existing way they're using the buildings, what programs, what shortcomings they have. One I'd like to share with you from North Forsyth High School, we've been talking about, was creating a health sciences laboratory up there. It was a situation where we were gonna have to take a science lab and the adjoining computer lab, modify this area to fit the standards for a health, uh, science, uh, healthcare science, uh, program. Uh, one of the things we're looking at as we go forward is to incorporate possibly cafeteria space that we were talking about modifying in this North Forsyth High School plan. Maybe that space could be developed better without tearing out a science lab, so those are things we're trying to work between as we evaluate those spaces.
Okay, super.
We'll try to re, repurpose as much space as best possible.
Exactly.
Uh, real quickly, as we have this on here, let me go ahead, one of the things we did, meet with a group from North Forsyth High School, as parents from, uh, the high school as well as surrounding middle schools. And, uh, we kind of did a little mock-up after we had met with them for our local facility plan and tried to address what things we need there. Critical element we talked about in the past is that they have the cafeteria that has two serving lines, has very limited access. So the key thing was to create the new cafeteria, much larger contiguous area than what we've kind of cobbled together with opening up computer labs, adding on a little addition, popping into two other classrooms. We have seating area, we just don't have the service area, so what we've talked about doing, let's see this, click for me here.
Well, even the seating area you have is a bit hodgepodge.
I don't think I have the flexibility to expand, do I? Uh, very quickly, what we're looking at is that center area that everybody knows as the bus loop, where I've got my, uh, arrow pointing. We're looking at putting an infill building there, the key part of that will be a cafeteria over towards the, what we call the ninth grade academy that we had done in the past. We'll bring a new administration area upwards in that section of the building, we'll be able to repurpose space that was the old cafeteria. We'll be able to take the space that was a computer lab that became cafeteria space, turn it back into a computer lab or some other facility, uh, there's a couple other classrooms that we popped into. Uh, we do have ra, room around the perimeter of this area to develop new classrooms in that area for brand-new classrooms, new cafeteria, new kitchen. And the cafeteria is designed, as we did with Lambert and West High School, to do a food service court, so they have multiple access points which to get service. The key thing with this is that parking lot is a primary, uh, cross-connect from the main building to the two-story addition back over to the ninth grade academy. We're now getting this enclosed, getting it under roof, they're not cutting outside through the parking lot. I have sketched out one other area, kind of overlaps tennis courts back here next to gym, if we do increase the capacity of North Forsyth High School to twenty-five hundred students, we would look at trying to develop a new competition gym for that size population, their one current, uh, gymnasium, of course, was designed when that population was still at capacity of about fourteen hundred students. So it will probably find itself undersized as we got to two thousand students, so certainly by the time we get to twenty-five hundred students, it will probably, uh, not serve so well. The other parts you see on here is, one of the things that we have never really addressed, as we've done additions to North Campus, is a traffic plan. Uh, again, this is a very conceptual design, civil engineering is not my forte, uh, apparently artwork with paint is not my forte either, but, um, what we've done, the area in black, you see coming between where Coal Mountain Elementary School is, the black lines show the bus and service driveways to the new building. The service area will now move behind the performing arts center and serve the cafeteria kitchen, which takes it out of that back driveway over there where the gym is, and will create a separated bus loop, which we like to do for all of our campuses, to the south side of the five hundred corridor, in that area black, and expand that area there for a bus parking lot. The other area we would do is, in the purple area that comes down to the front of the school, try to create a little attendance pickup loop in that area and carry that carpool traffic over by the baseball field for a carpool line, bring them a little bit better stacking distance down than that area. The area in orange, uh, which primarily used to be the North Forsyth Middle School's playfield, will become a future parking lot, as well as, uh, the area that they currently use for a parking lot. The big part with this plan comes to that four-way intersection where Coal Mountain Drive turns, the driveway goes into North Forsyth High School, and the driveway goes into North Forsyth Middle School. That has been our biggest bottleneck, we've tried to work around for years, how direct traffic in and around through that area. Uh, as you see, what we've done is we've taken out the North Forsyth Middle School on this plan, we're circulating that traffic directly around North Middle School off Coal Mountain Drive from another access point. And we're actually looking to bring the access point back out onto Smith Lane on the east side of the campus. So that brings the whole traffic loop from Coal Mountain Drive around their building and over to Smith Lane. It will give us an opportunity also to look at, uh, possibly using, they currently use the front entrance as their, uh, pickup point, now we've opened up the opportunity to create the carpool lane past the gymnasium and that canopy there.
And then they wouldn't be backed up, because they're backed up almost to Highway nine, sometimes Middle School.
Yes.
Right, uh, that'd make a big difference.
Um, and of course, the other thing is to look, and this is very rough, trying to figure out how we'd bring the bus loop back in there, but trying to keep a, a separate bus loop running from Smith Lane back through there and back on to Coal Mountain Drive and back out. Uh, for North Middle School, they still have access through Coal Mountain Drive if they came up from, uh, Highway three sixty-nine, but instead of going straight across the intersection, they would turn right and then turn into the middle school. So very again, that's just a quick schematic of what we've done, uh, other things we've identified, not shown here, is looking at highway improvements at Highway nine, Smith Lane, and Highway three sixty-nine to the bus transportation area. We kind of pulled a quick one with the county by patching the bus shop driveway all the way over to the high school and gave a backdoor for that operation that we began to use for carpool and parents, which put a lot of traffic at that intersection, and we never really made the proper improvements there, three sixty-nine, so that will be a big project for us to work with DOT on those two interchange.
So right now, North has over, what, twenty-three hundred and some odd students, or twenty-three?
Yeah, I was gonna say it was close to twenty-four last time.
So this increases classrooms, it increases efficiency, and given your closing in that courtyard, and I've seen that change-of-class syndrome, it also addresses some safety issues.
Yes.
And traffic, this is much needed and much looking forward to, I'm guessing, this is great.
This, this looks great to me, you know, when we met with those parents, they were like, oh, we don't want to ban it, this to me is not a Band-Aid.
Right.
We've played with, and as we've talked with Dr. Evans, we're already, uh, considering a couple architectural firms to come here and take-
I was, that's what I was gonna say.
Take our conceptual plan, take that conceptual plan.
Because this looks great, but if you get somebody, I mean, you know, it looks great, but none of, nobody's architect, and they may come in and say, hey, with this, if this is what you need, you might could do this and have some great idea too. So I think that is, that we should do that too.
Well, we talked with Lindsay Pope Bravefield, who did, did the two-story addition, and they also have our high school program from that addition.
So they're familiar with the layout.
They have all the background information for the school, as well as BRPH has done the Western Lambert High School, so we'll be talking with them, they also have our high school program needs, and, uh, try to figure out which one of them has the prettiest picture, so to speak, and-
Can we, can we have this, will we be able to have drawings and design done well in advance, so that when we do get the funding, we can hit the ground and dig the shovel the next day, or close to it?
That really, for, this project is gonna depend so much on the bond being passed, where we can go ahead and fully contract an architect to take us beyond a very schematic design we're talking about here, into the full design development and construction document process, but, uh-
The sooner the better.
That, that'd be a little bit steep with price tag, now I think we have, uh, maintenance operation money to fund right now.
I mean, that's something we gotta keep on our radar though, so that's-
One quick question, that, you don't have to bring it back up, but the little green box over by the gym you didn't hit, take that's a rectangle field?
That's gonna be a rectangle field for North Forsyth Middle School, when their whole field becomes a parking lot.
Okay, that's an important thing.
But there was no room on the other side of their school, was that?
We, you know, you mentioned that.
You weren't sure if there was enough land there to do that.
I really haven't gone back very, but I'm still leaning towards this side, because it does serve from the gymnasium better.
That's true, I was just thinking that eventually North is even gonna have more students, and that would give more room there where you'd, for, um, what are they called, uh, cottages, if we were to say.
Trailers, before East is built.
I was thinking it's on into the future, so.
Are there any other things that you want us to take back to the committee?
Are you guys good?
I think it's a good start.
Okay, then we'll be back in October.
And just a question, so South High is in a similar situation as far as the, the shape of the building, the school, and the need for more, so we're looking at a similar type of, not exactly the same, but an enhancement of the same type?
Yeah, we're waiting for the CTAE feedback, and then we'll start working on that after we have it, because we have our, um, CTAE and technology feedback is due on October seventh for the facilities plan, and it's due October ninth for the bond plan.
Okay.
So we're working in collaboration with that, and then in January, we'll bring to you a draft of projects for bond referendum.
Okay, looking forward to that, thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks. Okay, we've had a lot to digest tonight, is there any other future agenda items that anybody would like to add? I've, I've got your transportations in October.
Um, again, to bring up the topic of the local business initiative, uh, policy, it's something some of the county has, that if a local business is bidding on a, a project, that perhaps they would get some options. The county has one in, in place, and we could, I know it's not an easy policy to come up with, but they have something in place that has been tried and tested, so we could look at that as a baseline to work off of, potentially.
Okay.
So, just like to bring that for discussion.
Anything else? We're good, okay. Next, we have executive session for personnel issues, do I have a motion that we go into executive session?
Someone, second.
A motion by Nancy and a second by Tom, all in favor? Unanimous?